Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
Move to his Q. Simpson member.
Who's Simpson? No, the meal's here. He's in the bathroom.
Okay.
Pledge of allegiance and invocation by Veronica Ramirez.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, we still our minds before you. You have entrusted us as stewards of your great city. Help us to listen before speaking and guide our hearts as we make decisions. We ask your blessings upon us, as well as our customers, our partners, and our entire workforce. May we be always mindful of their service. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right.
Okay, moving on. Proclamations to A. Proclamation proclaiming September 2022 as ovarian cancer awareness month. And we do have Mr. Liscano here to receive the proclamation.
Great. Want to introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, thank you so much. Good afternoon, honorable mayor, city commissioners. My name is Mario Liscano. I'm the associate, I'm the administrator of corporate affairs for DHR Health. And we'd like to thank you on behalf of our physicians, our board of managers, all our employees and our patients for recognizing these two great proclamations that we have here. As today, we do are recognizing the cancer awareness. It's important that we continue. And we have our staff here, so I'm going to go ahead and ask them to come up here. That we continue to provide the information awareness. We have Ms. Annabelle Arayano, who will be speaking and receiving the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. We're very excited. As Mario shared with you today, September is cancer awareness for prostate as well as children's cancer. We're very excited to be here and for you to be supporting the importance of early detection and prevention. We know that it does save a lot of lives and it's very important for a city like yours that's growing and that continues to attract people to its community to take care of its community members. So thank you. We appreciate it on behalf of DHR Health.
Great. Commissioner?
Okay, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of death among women. And each year approximately 21,980 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer. And whereas due to vague symptoms and the lack of reliable early detection tests, most women are not diagnosed until stage three or later, when the cancer has already begun to spread to the lymph nodes and outside the pelvis. And whereas doctors across the country are currently conducting clinical trials and researching ovarian cancer. But for the time being, awareness through education is the best tool for early detection and increased chance of survival. And whereas the City of Far encourages all residents to learn more about the subtle signs and symptoms and current treatment options available to women to identify and overcome this disease. Now therefore, I, Iza Flores, on behalf of the mayor, Ambrosio Hernandez, mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission due hereby proclaim September 2022 as ovarian cancer awareness month.
Thank you. So we're going to go and tackle the prostate cancer as well? Are you here to receive that as well?
Both.
All right.
Okay, to B. Proclamation proclaiming September 2022 as prostate cancer awareness month.
Who's doing that? Dr. Caballero?
Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. And whereas this year approximately 268,490 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone this year. And roughly 34,500 will die this year from the disease, which is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preventing and protecting our families. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Hidalgo County to increase the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, I, Dr. Ramiro Caballero, in behalf of Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez, mayor of City of Far, Texas, by virtue of his authority, which on behalf of the city commission do hereby proclaim September 2022 as prostate cancer awareness month.
Can you share with the public what it is that your organization does for the public as far as cancer and treatments and people who don't have, I guess, limited resources or no resources?
Definitely. Thank you, Dr. Ambrosio. One of the things that I'm so proud to say is that I'm part of DHR Health, an organization that is proud to bring services to this area. And one of the things that DHR Health has done very well is invest in oncology services. In the past, patients had to leave our community to get services. The organization has brought about 79 specialists and a lot of them in the oncology realm. So we do have a, for example, medical oncologist, we have prostate urologic oncologists, we have ear, nose, and throat specialists who work with our oncologists hand by hand to make sure that our patients don't have to leave this community and can get their treatment here. It's nice to see the comprehensive care that our doctors are actually engaging in. So we do have tumor boards where multiple specialists get together and they talk about these cases that otherwise there wouldn't be a platform for it. That's something that was definitely needed in this community and we've seen how it really has improved the outcomes. When a surgeon comes together with a PCP, with a plastic surgeon, with a urologist, with an oncologist, they really come together with a comprehensive plan of action for these patients and the outcomes have been amazing. So it's very nice to see that that's being provided in this community. One of the great things about the Cancer Center at Renaissance is that we actually pride ourselves in being a Commission on Cancer accredited facility. And what does that mean to people? It means that we are giving the gold standard of care. Care that's not provided anywhere else but here because there's no one else without that steel, seal of recognition from San Antonio down. So it does guide us as to how we should be treating patients, what guidelines we should be following. It's amazing to see that you don't have to leave this community to get the service that you need. So thank you very much for allowing us to share that. And we also have patient navigation. When patients are actually diagnosed with this disease, it's not only a disease that affects the person, it affects their family, it affects their finances. It doesn't matter what kind of insurance you have, it has a lasting impact. And so we have a group of navigators who will actually act as advocates for the patients and navigate them through the system. That's unheard of, right? I mean, usually you're on this journey by yourself, but we do know that DHR Health is such a big entity and it needs somebody to hold your hand and guide you while you're going through this diagnosis. And we don't just take care of the patient, we take care of the family. And that has made a world of impact. We have six new medical oncologists who are doing amazing. One of our medical oncologists is actually from the valley, born and raised in Elsa, which is really exciting. We've got five others that are awesome. I mean, two female medical oncologists who are tereating our patients and making sure that we are really there to help better improve their lives and their family's lives.
Also, since this prostate cancer awareness of, I've had two PSJ friends of mine that have been recently diagnosed and one was going to go to MD Anderson because they thought of the robot prostate cancer operation, one was going to go to Miami, but instead they stayed here because they weren't, they weren't aware that it could be offered. So can you enlighten the gentleman here in the audience, but also the wives? So they understand that besides chemo and radiation, you can also get robotic surgery done in the River Valley and, which is state of the art. Can you expand on that?
Definitely. So one of the great things is like Dr. Ambrosio was saying, we do have a urologic oncology team and it's made up of two doctors. So we've got Dr. Alonso and Dr. Olguin, who specialize only in urologic cancer. One of the things that we've noticed is a lot of men have PSAs that are elevated. And at that time, they need a specialist. And a lot of people don't realize that we do have robotic surgery with the Da Vinci here. People don't have to leave. We also have the radiation oncologist that's available to treat that patient should they need that service. The majority of the time, we've seen that once our urologic oncologists go in and remove the tumor surgically, then we don't have to get any of those other services. So it's important for you to, as a woman, taking care of your husband, to make sure that they're getting their yearly screenings, that they are getting their blood work. And if their blood work is elevated, that you're allowing us to take care of them and see them. The earlier that we detect this, the better the outcomes, meaning that maybe you just need surgery. You don't need anything else.
Great. Who's going to be in the photo there? Great. If you guys could come up to the, great. Proclamation?
Thank you. Yes, to C. Proclamation proclaiming September 25th, 2022 as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. And we do have Mr. Robert Garcia and his group here.
Garcia, want to introduce your, your guests?
Yes. Martha Rangel, mother of Delisa Rangel. Miss Tricelda. Her son is Angel. Chris with Rebecca and Magalena. Teresa with Rebecca and Magalena, sisters. And is Villarreal with Julio Villarreal from here from far. And his son is Julio. And then we have another Gerardo, also a mother.
Thank you, sir.
And then, of course, myself with my brother.
Yes. Welcome, all of you. Sorry for your loss.
Sorry for your loss. So the proclamation. Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children established September 25th as the National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims a result of anonymously passed resolutions by the U.S. Senate on October 16, 2007, and the U.S. House of Representatives on May 14, 2007. And whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children believes the honoring the memory of victims who have been killed by violence and acknowledging the resulting long-term trauma for families, communities. This National Remembrance Day is an essential way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. And whereas in 2021, an estimated 24,576 homicides nationwide and over 255,760 close relatives were affected. The Rio Grande Valley experienced about 55 murders and over 550 close relatives were affected, far higher than the number of direct homicide victims. Whereas survivors of homicide victims transform their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by homicide. Through leadership, grief support, and advocacy, survivors are reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And whereas we urge all citizens of Far and Hidalgo County to join the 10th Annual Candlelight Regional Healing and Hope to be hosted at Jose Pepe Salina Memorial Recreation Center from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission do hereby proclaim the 25th day of September 2022 as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims.
In witness or if I here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Far to be affixed on the 19th of September 2022. All right, gentlemen, let me give you a proclamation.
Um.
Next.
To D. Proclamation proclaiming September 26th, 2022 as Human Resources Professional Day. And we do have the Human Resources Director and her staff here to receive this proclamation. The ladies that make it all happen here in the city.
That's right.
You guys can come up.
Really? Oh, wow. You brought everybody. Here, I thought it was just her. Make sure you introduce your staff.
For the record, my name is Veronica Ramirez, the Human Resources Director.
One by one, instead of say hi?
Before you, you have Jessica Ramirez. Ashley Melendez. Claudia Galnare. Next. Beatriz Fuentes. Ana. Mijegas, Lucero Bermeja. Magali Saldania. Valerie Rivera. Michaela Garcia. Oralia Zuniga. And Michael Mata. Your Human Resources Department. Yes. We managed to get one aboard.
That's great. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for everything you do for the city, all the employees, obviously. Thank you very much. Bobby?
Your proclamation. Whereas human resource professionals are responsible for implementing effective practices for the hiring, training, development, retention, and planning, and giving the great City of Far and all its employees quality employment. And whereas Human Resources promotes excellence and the betterment of protocols and makes every effort to serve the needs of employees and the city by providing the most beneficial worker-related education and procedures. And whereas leaders in human resources create a safe and results-oriented work environment in the best interest of employees with exemplary return on investment. And whereas each day, Human Resources ensures every city employee is treated with dignity, respect, and equanimity, ensuring inclusiveness, diversity, and fair employment practices. And whereas the City of Far recognizes all human resource professionals for their role as a valuable part of this great organization. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission do hereby proclaim September 26th, 2022 as Human Resources Professional Day.
Congratulations, ladies.
Right, gentlemen?
And gentlemen, I'm sorry.
I think they're all coming with the party.
It was all HR?
Thank you, ladies, for everything you guys do every day. To E. Proclamation proclaiming October 23rd to the 31st of 2022 as Red Ribbon Week. And we do have Vanessa, is Vanessa here? And the police, the police unit is also going to receive this proclamation with her. Join us. Vanessa Soto.
Hello.
Hi.
Vanessa Soto, Special Events Manager for the City of Far. We also have Ms. Verjinia Fuen. We have Chief Morin from San Juan. Chief Osuna from Alamo. And Chief Garcia. We also have Chief Gonzalez and the Far Police Department.
Good afternoon. Enough for the proclamation. Whereas cities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. Whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs and the hope lies in the hard work and determination of our communities to create a drug-free environment. And whereas local leaders in government and in community know that the support of the people in the neighborhoods is the most effective tool they can have in their effort to reduce the use of alcohol and other drugs by Texans. And where success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention are imperative. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week, it is, and whereas the Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established in Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts. And whereas October 23rd to the 31st, 2022 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, calling on all Americans to show their support for a drug-free state by wearing a red ribbon and participating in drug-free activities during the week. And whereas the Red Ribbon Initiative will be observed year-round, presenting a unified and visible commitment of our intolerance towards the use of drugs and calling all citizens of Far, San Juan, Alamo to participate in year-round drug-free activities. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Eliezar Huajardo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, mayor of City of Far, Mario Garza, mayor of the City of San Juan, Diana Martinez, mayor of the City of Alamo, and Ricardo Rick Pedraza, president of PSJA ISD School Board, by virtue of the authority vested in us and on behalf of the City Commissions of Far, San Juan, Alamo, and PSJA ISD, do hereby proclaim the 23rd to 31st day of October, 2022 as Red Ribbon Week.
Wonderful. Now, I know it's, it's important to the city, but do we have anybody from, from the police department would like to speak up on why it's important for the police department and PSJ, of course, as well?
Commissioner Mayor, good afternoon. I have Chief Garcia with PSJA ISD. And definitely, this, this item is very, very important to the three cities in the Tri-City area and of course, our school district. There's another item on the agenda that you guys will get to, to vote on, which is the Tri-City Red Ribbon Parade. And we want to invite the community, we want to invite all the, the students of our area to come join us on that Saturday to commemorate Red Ribbon Week and to show the support. But I'd like to give Chief Garcia the opportunity.
Thanks for speaking a little bit. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me touching up on that Red Ribbon Parade. It's going to be October 8th. And the district wants to thank the City of Far for allowing us to run that operation and that parade and be the host city for that. It's always been, you know, going back to the 80s when I was growing up, 15, 16 years old, playing volleyball in the Red Ribbon tournaments during that time. So we always look forward to the support that we get from, of course, the City of Far Police Chief, but the other two cities as well. We're a tri-city district, we're a brand-new police department. But that neighborhood, community sense of having the three cities come together as a whole to help out the public is, is really what we're shooting for. So thank you for allowing this to happen in the city and we look forward to having a great event.
Great. You're from PSJ, right? Want to step up and say hi? Say hi to your family and then give us some commentary?
Hi, my name is Gina Sines. I'm the Director of Counseling and Guidance. And the way Chief Garcia was saying that we're just thankful and we're grateful that, you know, you're passing this proclamation because we're very excited because we haven't had the parade for like two years since everybody has been shut down for COVID. So we just feel, you know, it's very important, you know, for our kids to, to be aware that, you know, we're all living a drug-free life and that it's important, you know, for the students and for the community to make healthy choices. And so thank you so much for, for approving this proclamation.
Great. Thank you. You want, anybody want any comments? Otherwise, we'll go for our photo. Great. You guys want to step up here? We'll take our photos again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
There does not need anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on. Public testimony. Hilda, did anybody sign up? Item four, public hearing. Did anybody sign up? No? And item five, city manager's report. We do have a few events of interest that I'd like to share with you guys. Not sure, the media, we had a 16 de septiembre celebration on Friday, so media created a short recap for you, for you guys, for those who missed it. I hope you guys enjoy it.
All right.
They did have a Dito contest. That was at the end. The, I think that was the lady that won, actually.
Come on, so Melanie.
She's hiding.
You didn't do it?
She did not do it. We'll, we'll put her on the list for next time. The second event of interest that I'd like to mention is our Far Innovation Technology Department will be hosting a quarterly educational technology conference series in the, in the, in the first And the, and the, and the first event will be taking place September 21st at Far One, 1121 East Nolana. And there will have three different speakers that will, that come in from the global manufacturing, presenting on different topics on network optimization and security. And the event will be from 8:30 to 12:00, and it is open to anybody that's interested in attending. You guys have any questions, you can always call us and we'll give you additional information. Also, Public Works Bring Your Own Batteries Campaign, this is going on the whole month of September, and you can go drop off your batteries at Public Works Department, 1015 East Ferguson, from Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and proof of residency is required. And also, I just wanted to make a note before the last announcement. In May 16, the city of Far adopted a strategic plan, and everything that, that we do, this is our strategic plan for the next five years. And I don't know if anybody noticed, but in the last agenda, and from here on, we're going to be linking every single agenda item to the strategic objectives. And the strategic plan, we identify six strategic objectives at the city. Basically, those are the core of the city's functions, and everything that we do is aligned to those six objectives. So, we just want to make sure to inform the community, because I will not be reading the bolded area on the agenda items, but that way you know what it is. They're all linked to service excellence, infrastructure, quality of life, economic vitality, sound governance, and fiscal sustainability, and a safe and secure city. So, if you notice, though, the bolded language on each agenda item, that's what it is. And last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Lauro Garza here from Special Olympics of Texas, and he would like to address the commission this, this afternoon.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. My name is Lauro Garza. I am the Director for Special Olympics Texas, Rio Grande Valley. And I'm here very briefly to give the city of Far, certainly Mayor Ambrosio, a big thank you to you guys for being a big supporter of the Special Olympics for the last several years. We serve 8,000 children and adults with intellectual disabilities valley-wide, and without the support of cities like Far, we, we can't, we can't buy metal, we can't put on events, we can't buy uniforms, we can't do anything. So, we really appreciate it. So, a small token of our appreciation is a small plaque that I brought you guys, and as you can see here, pretty, pretty nice, I think. And just thank you. Thank you so much for your support. And on behalf of all of our athletes, including several hundred of them from PSJA, we really, truly thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You guys want to get a picture with Lauro?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Our next item, 5B, Submission of Sales Tax Collection Report for September 2022. The city of Far shows an increase of 9.71% year-to-date true growth and a 10.21% compared to September 2021. If you guys have any questions, we do have Finance Director here in the audience.
No questions.
Moving on, item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial and will be enacted by one motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Okay. Item seven, ordinances and resolutions.
Oh, we're going to go to executive session. In accordance with Section 551.071 to 551.087, Texas Government Code, the Far Board Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:39. The time's 5:25, we're back in open session. We're back on our regular agenda.
Okay, 7A, or seven ordinances and resolutions, 7A, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance adopting and approving budget for a year beginning October 1, 2022, ending September 30th, 2023. And this will be adopted in one reading.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Yes?
7B, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance adopting tax rate for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and this item will require a record vote.
I make a most, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7176 cents, which is effectively an 8.5% increase in the tax rate.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernández? Commissioner Eliezar Wajado?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero? Commissioner Daniel Chavez? Commissioner Ricardo Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Estha Flores? Thank you.
For the record, Carla, we're not raising our, our city property tax at all. It's the same. It's just the appraised value that went up, correct?
That is correct. The city of Far is not raising this property tax rate.
We have not. Great, thank you.
7C, consideration.
Oh, wait. I had seconded. She needed clarification, sorry.
No, no problem. 7C, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance amending O 201936 Fee Schedule for Building Permits Plan Review and Land Use Development.
Okay. Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
7D, consideration and action, if any, on resolution appointing, reappointing four members to the Far Economic Development Corporation to Board of Directors.
Move to table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It is on table.
For this item, we have three members seeking reappointment, which is Mr. Marty Moore, Reynaldo Pérez, Mario Liscano, and one new member, Mike, Michael Pacheco.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
7E, consideration and action, if any, on resolution appointing, reappointing one member for the Far Firefighters and Police Officers Civil Service Commission. And Mr. Vittorio Puentes is seeking reappointment.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
8A, consideration and action, if any, on the proposed expenditure allocation budget from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
8B, consideration and action, if any, approving budget for Far Economic Development Corporation Two for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
8C, consideration and action, if any, approving budget for tax increment for investment zone number one for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
8D, consideration and action, if any, approving budget for tax increment for investment zone number two for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
8E, consideration and action, if any, approving budget for Far Housing Finance Corporation for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
8F, consideration and action, if any, approving the budget for Far Housing Finance Corporation Jackson Place Apartments for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
8G, consideration and action, if any, approving budget for the Greater Far Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
9A, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to award the supply contract for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfate liquid polymer blend and liquid ammonium sulfate to Chemtrade Chemicals from Parsippany, New Jersey.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
9B, consideration and action, if any, on inter-local agreement with the city of West Loco for animal shelter services.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
9C, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to renew agreement with Hollis Rutledge and Associates on grant management planning and writing.
Move for approval. Who's that man?
I don't hear a second, so.
Thinking.
Can we pause for eternity?
Oh, no. It's raining. I was. It's raining outside.
No, great service. You always provide great service to the city, sir. So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
9D, consideration and action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Purpose-Driven Polygraph Investigative Consultant from West Loco, Texas, for the Police Department Polygraph Services.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
9E, consideration and action, if any, authorize, I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. 9E, consideration and action, if any, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with BLR HR Hero for subscription services for HR tools and compliance.
Move for move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.